Hi, good evening and welcome to the City Council Redevelopment Agency of August 22. At this time, I'd like to ask you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second order on our council agenda this evening is changes to the order of the agenda. Any of my fellow council members have any changes this evening, staff?
No, Madam Mayor.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to make any changes to the order of the agenda? Seeing then, we'll move right ahead. Council reports. First item, 3A, is a review, the response to grand jury report, and authorize myself to sign and send the letter. There was a, in our packet that came out, I guess it was just Friday, there was the copy of the letter. Are there any questions or discussions on that?
I have a few questions. I didn't really have time to look at this very clearly because I was away for the weekend, so didn't get it on Friday when it came out. I only got it today. But there are some items on here I wanted to get some, I had some questions about primarily on the backside of the letter, I guess it would be page two, where it states that the city did not award any contracts of that type, I guess the type being additional contracts to someone who already has a contract with the city. I suppose that refers to what's up here in quotation marks, "Stop awarding multiple contracts of any dollar amount to persons of close working relationships with city administration without first establishing a fair, open, and appropriately advertised contracting process." So it's saying the city did not award any contracts of that nature over the tenure of the past year, and I suppose that would be partially true regarding the outreach coordinator because we didn't have a contract, but money was simply paid out without one under, as Mr. Garvey explained, something with administrative agreement, something like that. But then I had a question about that also because when we did San Carlos Avenue, I believe there was an additional contract for that for construction management services. I'm not certain on these, and I'm asking staff if this was the case. When we did the installation of backflow devices, we did, we extended some sewer projects beyond the original contracts for sewer. We did the corporation yard solar. I know I saw some payments come through to Moktari Engineering on that project. I suppose that would be over and above his contract as city engineer, public works director. And then we have a NPDS contract with Moktari Engineering. That's an additional contract to his contract as city engineer, public works director. And I do believe those are all the kinds of things that the grand jury was referring to.
Brian?
I guess through the chair, when the grand jury letter came in, we did go back and look at the last 12 months to see if there were any new contracts awarded to the various firms that contract with the city, and we did not find any such new contracts. They were all under the existing scope of work for the contract firms that we already had in place.
And what about this agreement that we had that wasn't a contract at all, but something with Mr. Garvey paying out for outreach coordinator? How would that apply?
My understanding with outreach coordinator was that was done administratively and it was not a new contract.
Do you not think that the grand jury would apply the same reasoning to that?
Matt?
Because they're saying, "The civil grand jury concludes with a comment that the city should stop awarding multiple contracts of any dollar amount to persons," and so forth. I suppose if money's being paid out, whether it's a contract or not, money's being paid out.
Well, I think the exact language here, the city attorney is showing me, it says that the city should not award, let me get the exact wording for you, "should stop awarding multiple contracts of any amount to persons with close working relationships with the city." And again, in our review, there were no such contracts in the last 12 months.
Who has a contract for NPDS?
I believe we have a firm that, is it an engineering firm that works with us on NPDS?
There are, I think, several contracts relating to the NPDS services, but they've been ongoing for many years, the Neil Martin and Associates contract, and also the EOA engineering firm that contracts with a variety of cities for NPDS services.
Yeah.
I'm not sure of any others.
Right. Those are the two I was thinking of, NMA and EOA.
I find that odd.
Well, Matt, did you have other language or something that you would like to, or, I mean, I guess the whole idea about this is that we have to have a formal response back to the grand jury related to their letter to us about contracting practices. So if you have changes to the letter, then perhaps you would like to suggest some alternative language? Is that what?
I'm not so certain we should be stating back to the grand jury that we have not had any such contracts. I'm not convinced that we haven't. I do remember a particular project that came before us, and a member of the, is a resident of San Carlos, got up and asked, "Who, is there a, an additional contract on this for construction management?" And the answer was yes. I believe that was in the last 12 months, but I'm not certain.
Yeah, I don't really-
And that's what I'm saying, Inga, you know, I only read this today. I didn't have time to look into any of this on my own, so I haven't had really time to look at it. I'm depending on staff to give me the answer on this.
Either we did or we didn't.
Well, again-
Either we did or didn't. And we're stating that by based upon the review of staff, stating, "We did not award contracts of this type." So if we, if you feel that we did, then we need to know those names, and staff needs to say, you know, "We did or we didn't make those awards." Bob?
I guess in response to-
Response to Councilmember King, and I'll let the city attorney comment as well. We did review contracts from the past year, and while there were contracts in the past year with outside firms, the firms that contract with the city for department head services, there were no new contracts among those firms. So for purposes of responding to the grand jury, what I think they're talking about, there were no such within the last 12 months.
Well, when was San Carlos Avenue done?
So what on San Carlos, just the re, the great repaving? That was done right before the start of school last year. I remember that.
Correct. And again, something like that probably would have been inspected by the city employee, Inspector Vin, but to the extent that Moktari Engineering might have been involved, it would have been under their ongoing contract for public works director and city engineer services. There was no specific separate contract for that work.
I'm going to go through these, installation of backflow devices?
Same thing.
The additional sewer project we did?
Mm-hmm, same thing.
And the solar project on the corporate yard?
Same thing.
The same thing was?
Mr. Epler in that case was the lead engineer, but it was part of the base contract. There was no specific contract for that project.
So are there other questions from my fellow councilmembers? All right. Does someone want to make?
I can't remember the public's who you could call.
Certainly. I mean, it's not a public hearing, but you're more than welcome to come up and say something, name and address or city residents for the record, please.
Clint Miller, 2429 San Carlos Avenue. The citizen that Mr. Growcott was referring to was myself. I specifically asked, I think, I think what's going on here is what I've seen before. Mr. Moktari answered that he had a part of the backflow device down at White Oaks. He was going to do the inspection on it. I think he was only going to make $5,000 bucks. I think that project has died. Am I not correct?
The backflow device was installed.
It was installed, okay.
Now, whether or not there was a contract awarded to Moktari Engineering, what we heard from staff was there was no contract.
Okay. Well, what I, what I determined in that meeting, the answer I got was that he was going to make $5,000 bucks on that. And there was another one, let me see, there were two, there were two contracts, and he had, he had both of those. He was going to make something. As a matter of fact, his remark was, "Oh, I'm not going to make much, only about $5,000." But I think what I'm seeing here is we were doing this, we were going to do this. The project didn't go through, so he didn't get the contract. He didn't make the money. So therefore, staff can in all honesty at this point say that in the last 12 months, he hasn't had any contracts yet. The spirit was there.
Thank you for those comments. So is, is there a motion to allow me to authorize to send this letter, or do you want to push this off and hold it?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter. I want to go back to staff. Statement is made that a contract, no contracts were awarded.
Correct.
Okay. So what we're saying is staff is reporting to us that no contracts were reported. If we have a record of any contract being reported, then we must indicate to the grand jury that we've awarded these contracts. And what we're saying is we didn't award any contracts, period.
Mike, what I feel uncomfortable with is when I look through the warrants and I see additional projects being paid out to a contractor, contractor, no contractor, there's additional monies being paid over and beyond, over and above the contract for city engineer, public works director, the retainer that covers that, and you see all these other additional projects that get paid out, and things that come and go, projects like the corporate yard project, I know there was work done on that. I know Mr. Moktari got paid on that because I saw it in the warrants, and I followed the project number. Now, whether or not there was a contract, I can't say, but I know money was paid out.
Maybe the question is-
Wait, just a moment. Let the city attorney respond first, please.
I guess two things. Number one, we're responding to a one-page grand jury letter to the council that did not contain any specifics and just made a general statement. Staff has indicated, staff has looked back through the record, and in this past year, there has, there have been no new contracts awarded. We know that you've raised the issue, I guess in all of these, it's a Moktari Engineering issue. There's still the, what is it, the 2002 contract that contains the requirement to do contract management. There have been no, as far as I understand, no new contracts that have come forward. It's just a continuation of the same agreement. We haven't terminated that agreement. The council hasn't asked for it to be terminated. You might want to review it in the future, but that's another issue. As far as responding to the grand jury, and as far as I know too, there have been no new contracts awarded. I mean, we put in place procedures last year. We went to great extents to do that. We developed ordinance, the council adopted ordinance amendments, and we've been trying to watch every little agreement that could possibly come forward meet all the rules and regulations. So what we're hearing is staff has looked at the record, and there are no new agreements in response to the grand jury. We're following the guidelines that they asked us to follow.
Okay.
Well, thank you. If we're going to vote this evening on this, then are you asking for a vote on this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, then I'm going to abstain because I still, I don't feel comfortable with it. I know I've seen these payments, and, you know, maybe it's something I don't understand, but it's not clear to me, so.
Okay. So I heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Christine? I'm sorry. Brian? So you used to say Christine. Councilmember King? Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis is absent. Councilmember Growcott?
Abstain.
And Mayor Teagueal Doherty?
Yes. All right. Next item on our agenda this evening is the discussion of the hot harvest nights, our farmer's market, and how it relates, especially in this campaign season, to prospective current councilmember, Ashley Matt, I believe you're the only one who's filed for reelection, as well as other candidates that will be coming forward. And there was actually a recommendation from our city attorney related to this. So Bob, do you want to just go over that really quick?
Just to follow up on the memo, I found myself on my fourth call of duty to the hot harvest nights booth, standing there and realizing that the day before we closed off the filing for election, and here we were, you know, moving towards the November election, and there might be councilmembers who would be in the campaign, other councilmembers who might be supporting and electioneering for other people in the campaign, and we shouldn't be expending city resources or have a council booth at the time of the election. So I authored this memo to the council. Since then, the chamber has discussed it as well. You know, they have a encroachment permit, if you will, for the 700 block. It's their show. We just have a booth that, with their approval, for hot harvest nights. Cheryl Palmerink called from, I guess she's in Chicago, and she indicated that what the chamber would like to offer to the candidates is what they offer to anybody who wants to campaign or come forward in a political or solicitation mode, is to set up a table at the end of the block outside the immediate area and have, I think there are three nights left, and have two candidates per night at this table to the end of the year, but not to have the candidates, as we've indicated, in our council booth. I did follow through with a call to the FPPC to see if, they had some concerns about it. As I pointed out, there was a proposition as far as expending city monies and resources. They say they're only concerned with money. And in this case, it would just be resources. The city is not spending any money on the booth, per se. I think it's up to the council, for the council's calls, to whether you want to continue to man the booth, but from the chamber's perspective, they'd like to see the candidates off campus, if you will, for the election.
Okay. You know, maybe I can speak first to this because I've actually spent some time in thinking about, especially after receiving Bob's memo, which was essentially, let's close down the booth through the duration. Having set the public's expectation that not only members of city council, but staff members, the department heads as well, are going to be down at farmer's market, I think it's, I would like to suggest to my councilmembers that we continue this, however, that we do, I hate to say this, Matt, exclude you, just from the interest of we don't want to appear to be endorsing any one candidate. And I think you've already done your time in the booth anyway, but that we have it be either city staff or the remainder of the councilmembers that are not actually going to be currently engaged in campaigning, just from the interest of continuing to maintain that relationship with the public and the outreach that I think has become very, almost counted on, I think, by, by the public. So, but I open that up to my fellow councilmembers as well.
If I could speak next, as one who's actually in the campaign. What I suggested to Bob when we were down at the booth, and unbeknownst to me, I guess Brian had talked to Bob the day before, but I brought it up to Bob, and I said that it seemed, it might even be a relief to councilmembers who are not campaigning for one reason or another, to not have to finish out the last three evenings that are, that are still on schedule. And by the way, I've done two, not four. I guess we're, whatever we get. But as I suggested to Bob, it was that we invite in the candidates and make them part of the mix, and it'd just be meet your candidates and not really meet your council. And it sounds to me like that's what the chamber is, is offering to some extent. It just wouldn't be our council booth, it would be a separate thing off at the end-
That's right.
-with, with all the candidates. And if there's, there's six candidates, and there's three more evenings, so that's two candidates at each one, and-
Actually, there's four more evenings.
Is there four more?
Well, and I guess as I understood Cheryl Palmerink's comments today, because she left me a voicemail as well, apparently the chamber has a policy about not endorsing candidates. And from Cheryl's perspective, I mean, basically what I had recommended, and I, again, I guess we're all recommending different things, and that's good because council has many options here, what I suggested is, is that we end our hot harvest nights season, if you will, a little early, and hand the booth back to the chamber, and let the chamber decide what to do with the booth, whether they want to feature a downtown merchant, or a nonprofit, or whatever, so that we're not telling them, you know, what to do in the spirit of Bob's memo. And I think what Cheryl had indicated, as Bob said, is apparently their policy, as I understand it, is to allow this table set up, you know, during a certain area, and that that would be consistent. But again, I, you know, my own recommendation to you is that, that we, you know, to really be very conservative, perhaps, that we not hold the booth, and that, so that no one can accuse anyone on the council of doing any thing that even remotely looks like electioneering, quote unquote, which I think is the expression in the law in that booth, and that we totally leave it up to the chamber, what happens in that booth, and then it's really up to them, and we're totally out of it.
But that, that implies that actually, that the business of, of the city, and, you know, we've all worked the booth, as well as department heads, where a lot of, it's an opportunity for citizens to ask questions, to record issues, to find out how best to contact the right person within city hall. It's really more putting a human face on, you know, the people who just do sit on city council, as well as the department heads, those people, they're working behind the scenes to make the city work. And I think just because it's an election year, I don't, I don't see that that has any bearing, because those functions don't stop, and those needs don't stop, even though there is an election. I think we, as councilmembers, could decide that, you know, obviously, we're not going to be supporting or endorsing any given candidates in the booth. We're going to be there doing what we would be doing as if there weren't an election. I mean, in my, in my mind, I would throw it out to my councilmembers.
We've had some discussions about the appearance of conflicts of interest over the past year especially, and it would be my feeling, I think, maybe to go along with what Brian says in this case, and that was the first time I heard that tonight as an option, but just to turn it back over to the chamber. And that way, there is even no appearance of using a city resource to aid anyone. And that's probably the conservative way to take it, but at least it's out in the open, and there is no appearance of anybody helping anybody. Any of the candidates can go do whatever they would like to do. So that's probably, in my mind, again, it's a conservative way to do it, but it may be the safest way in the end.
Have we talked to Bob about this before, and maybe, Matt, the same time that you were down and we were talking about it, is my view was that we turn it back over, this is not our resource. There's no money expended here, there's no expenditure of, other than maybe the cleanup, but this is the chamber's deal. And I like Cheryl's idea of saying, this is their, you know, this is what they like to do. If we feel that the answers that need to be given, or receipt of the questions to come, we can have it manned by the staff, but I believe we shouldn't be there, and none of us, no matter if we're running or not running, and that allow the chamber, who's running the show, is their resource, to put us where, put the candidates where they feel necessary, so at the end of the, the end of the street. And there are four days, and you said there are four days remaining, so that way it's clear, and they got, you know, four dates for the candidates to sign up, and I think that's fair. Then there's no confusion about who's running and not running, who are you, who are I.
I was going to say, before you get too far into it, Joyce Strand, who's the president of the chamber, I see is here, and perhaps she might have some comments for us.
Yeah, first of all, just to clarify, there are, I think, five more hot harvest nights. I think there are five, too. And since we've gone two, three, and four. And what, I guess there are two things. Number one, the booth for the city was intended as a service to the community, and the idea was to have a booth at hot harvest nights where the city could be there to offer services to meet with the community. It was never intended to be a place to politicize or, or, you know, advance your causes, so to speak. The chamber, on the other hand, in the past, has provided, at hot harvest nights, has provided a table for Democrats and Republicans during the last election, and we would like to offer that same kind of opportunity to all the candidates, all six candidates. And in doing so, what we would do is we would draw straws by lottery, because we don't know which nights we would be able to offer. So what we would do is, and it might end up being, to me, it makes sense, you probably want to be as close to the election as possible, so I think that's where the three nights came up, do it the last three, the last three hot harvest nights, because that's the closest to the election, when you would make the biggest impact. So that's what we're recommending. We are more than happy, and actually, it's, I think it's right at the entrance to the park is where we would do it, where, where we had the Democrats and the Republicans last year. We would have one table each for each candidate, for two candidates. Okay?
So really, I see that there's, there's two different issues here. There's the first, which is actual candidates, and the solution for candidates would be, or one of the solutions would be put them at the designated chamber tables away from the city's booth. The second question is whether or not there is value in councilmembers that are not running for election in San Carlos to continue to man the booth, or whether or not it should be staff only, or whether or not it should be no booth at all. I think those are the three alternatives I see for the current meet your councilmembers booth.
And I would also reinforce, the chamber will not back any specific candidate. We will provide the opportunity for all candidates. So that would be the other thing. And yes, and we would like to see the city continue, because we think this is a valuable opportunity for all of us who do not normally deal with the city, to meet city folks and, you know, give, tell you our problems. But, you know, in essence, it was, it's a great opportunity, so we hope you will continue, but understand the issues. Okay?
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Joyce, you have a feeling one way or the other, of the three that Inga referred to, we're now down to you, you representing the chamber, would recommend which of the two, having staff there, staff only, or those not involved?
So it's council plus staff, staff only, or nobody from the city? Those are the three options that I've heard.
Well, I mean, we'd like to see council plus staff. My only issue is, how fair is that to Matt, then, if he's not allowed to participate because he's now a candidate? That would be the, that would be the issue, and I, and I would defer to Matt, whether he would-
If I can speak to that.
Yeah.
Number one, the first, first, to be clear, the reason I brought it up with Bob is, I wasn't thinking of just my situation, I was thinking of the other candidates. And let's be fair to them, if I'm going to be out there, let's get them out there too, you know? Number two, I agree with Inga, I do think it should continue, and I think it should be city council and staff. We've talked about it enough here tonight that you simply know if somebody asks you a question about the campaign or the election, just, sorry, can't talk about that. If you want to ask me about, you know, city issues or things Inga's talking about, you guys should be out there. I don't have to be there, I can be over at the, you know, you've made room for candidates, and I'm a candidate, so that's fine.
That would be the only issue. But I would like to see-
Matt, your view is the council not involved, so it would-
The council involved.
No, 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 but not involved in the election, so it would be-
Yes, that's right.
Tom, and Inga, and Dawn and I. Because the only person affected is you, really.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
I would respect saying, you tell us how, you know, you're the only one we're dealing with in this one.
Well, you're, not just me, you're dealing with all the candidates, but you're right.
No, I mean, there's representation at the other booth, yeah.
That's right. And I think we've discussed it, again, we've discussed it here enough tonight, that everyone's going to know, Tom's not here, but, you know, he can hear about this. We've discussed it here enough tonight that, you know, if Dawn gets a question, and somebody walks up to the, to the booth and says, "Well, what do you think of that rat Growcott?", you know? He's going to say, "You know what? I'm not here to ask those questions, answer those kind of questions. No comment. You got a question about trash pickup or something else? I'll answer it."
Yeah. Street sweeping, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly. So.
Right. Thanks, Joyce.
So we want to just not make any changes, then, and allow the chamber to work directly with any council candidates with respect to scheduling, positioning, whatever else, and that from this point forward, Matt, you're off the schedule-
All right, I'm off.
-in the council booth.
Ah, the real reason.
Thursday nights, back for you again.
Yeah.
I would ask, Madam Mayor, that at least we, since Bob, you know, you queried the FPPC, that we at least maybe just put a memo on the record saying, "We discussed this at today's meeting, and here's the, here's the result," and notify the FPPC, and right. They're not going to give us an answer, but at least we can say we publicly aired it, discussed it.
Or just put it on record.
Just go on record.
Yeah, no, I think that's a very good point. Okay. Moving, moving along here, next is a report on fire service options for San Carlos. Our interim city manager, Brian Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Teagueal Doherty, and the rest of the council. Coming before you tonight, give you the August update on our project for fire service options for San Carlos. As you know, I'm working closely with the council's ad hoc subcommittee on this topic, which is councilmembers Eaton and King. We met last week, and they felt very strongly that it was appropriate to give you an August update, since we did not have the first meeting in August, so that's what we're doing tonight. Essentially where we are since we last talked to you, is, as I think I mentioned in July, I asked Chief Loudon to recommend meetings with the staff at South County Fire. I wanted to get their take on the four proposals that we have received. Last week, we met with the firefighters' representatives and also representative from the firefighters' union, and I invited the interim city manager Belmont to attend that, and he did attend. I have also invited the fire management staff and the fire clerical staff to similar meetings. Those invitations have gone out. We do not have dates yet, but it is my impression that in the next week or two, we will- We do not have dates yet, but it is my impression that in the next week or two, we will have those meetings as well. And again, the purpose is a dialogue and also to hear what they think of each of the four proposals. I want to, again, thank Mike and Dawn for their continuing guidance and input. I think they've been invaluable in giving me some policy direction, in a sense, from the council of where we're going on this. In the next couple of weeks, I will be meeting with each of the four agencies to drill down a bit more in terms of their proposals. This, in the next week or two, we'll be meeting with CDF and the City of San Mateo, and then shortly thereafter, we'll be meeting with Redwood City and Menlo Park Fire. The latter two agencies, there's some vacation conflicts, and so those two probably won't be scheduled until after Labor Day. At this point, the, in addition to getting into the details of their proposals, we're also interested in the reporting relationships, how will San Carlos have input into the level of fire service that's delivered? And we also have some questions about cost. As you know, a couple of years ago, we had an election about South County Fire. I think everybody understood at that time that South County Fire was not sustainable under its current format, that we needed more money. In the current fiscal year, we are paying $4.86 million for fire service, and I'm sure the councils will aware that we have a $1.8 million general fund budget problem, which means that come February, we will need to reduce our fire costs to around $4.6 million. And right now, only one of the four proposals is at or below that level. So we're going to need to get the other entities to sharpen their pencils, I guess, to use a euphemism. The original schedule that was set out by Chief Loudon called for us to reduce the number of proposers from four to two in September. And I believe that with the help of the council subcommittee and Chief Loudon's guidance, that we will indeed be able to meet that guideline. You probably recall from our update last month that one of the conditions that Chief Loudon set for continuing to work with us was that we continue to move this process forward in the coming months and that we make progress. And I believe, based on the actions that San Carlos has taken, that at least in our city, we are clearly making progress. Another issue that has come up in the last couple of weeks is because of the uncertainty about fire service in the community, we have a number of vacancies at South County Fire. That's both due to retirements and to workers' comp situations. Chief Loudon has indicated that if one or both of the agencies is able to either narrow the field to two, or perhaps even pick the preferred agency, that he would be very appreciative of that because it would enable him to contract with that entity to provide temporary fire support for one or both of the agencies to help us with this staff shortfall that we're currently experiencing. We also continue to meet with the attorney at South County Fire, Jean Savery, who many of you know. She is providing us help in terms of wrapping up the South County Fire organization by the June 2006 deadline that both cities have set. And we're fairly far along in that process, we've resolved many of the issues, and I'm very confident that we'll be able to wrap up South County by next June and probably sooner than that, I believe. We continue to talk with Belmont. As you probably recall, both council members, King and Eaton, have indicated that they would prefer to keep the four companies at South County Fire together, and indeed, I've heard that from the other three members of this council as well. And so that continues to be a goal of mine. However, I should mention that the City of Belmont at the moment is on a different timetable than we are. We anticipate staying with Chief Loudon, the schedule of completing this process by this December. However, in recent weeks, we've been told by the City of Belmont that they're moving their process back to March of 2006. It is my belief that we would be wise in San Carlos to stay on the original timeline that Chief has set. It is a little conservative, perhaps, from my point of view, but I think that, given that we are trying to wrap this whole thing up by June, I would rather have extra time to review the contract and to look at any scenarios or things that might pop up than wait till the last minute. So sort of give you some thoughts about where I think we go from here. As I said, I think by September, we will have talked to all four agencies, we will have answered the questions, and we will be able to see if more than one of the entities is able to meet our $4.6 million target figure. Then we will come to you in September with a recommendation to narrow the field to two. And then in October, we'll begin the negotiation process. And again, I believe that that would lead us to bring a contract to the San Carlos council for contract fire services before the year is out. So those are kind of the highlights. And what I also wanted to mention is, as we narrow the field from four to two, one of the discussions that I had with council members King and Eaton was, I propose that we give you a more detailed report next month as part of the narrowing process. They were very comfortable with that, and so that would be my intent, unless the council feels otherwise. So expect next month, a detailed report at one of your two September meetings, and that's kind of, I think, where we are. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there additional questions?
Just, just a summary for, for the fellow two council members. What we're saying is, we hired Chuck Loudon to do this job in this timeframe. We have a budgetary issue, there are contracts to be negotiated with, with the unions, there are issues that, if we postpone and move back, we endanger what I think would be a fairly, and Chuck, you're sitting here, I won't say smooth, but I mean, we, we need to sit, stay on the timetable. And that's what we promised the four people who've submitted bids, will get specific information. As Chuck said at the last meeting, the devil is in the detail. I mean, it's easy to say here, the four bids, but when you start cutting through the detail, you get into, involved in very specific issues. So that's why we want to try to stay on track and not kind of postpone when you, it's kind of like putting a house up for sale and all of a sudden saying, well, we'll pull it off the market because I'm going to change the terms and conditions. Here are the terms and conditions, here's what we want to do, we have to stick to the table.
Well, and I would also say, too, that we appreciate all four agencies giving us this opportunity. If you recall, when this process started, we asked for three proposals, CDF, San Mateo, and Redwood City, and we actually got four, the Menlo Park one was unsolicited. And I will say that in particular, the City of San Mateo and CDF have expressed a considerable amount of interest in this proposal. They've been very, very anxious to talk with us, and I appreciate that level of enthusiasm from them, and indeed, I suspect that has something to do with the fact that when we asked for the four meetings, they were the first two on the list. I wasn't surprised, but I'm glad to see that level of enthusiasm. And I think that certainly some of these proposals will lead to some, a very nice arrangement for us in fire service in the future.
Okay.
One, one other quick thing, too. Brian, I think you are very wise in this respect, that there's a lot of detail to, to cover here. There's operational details, there's personnel, there's labor issues, contract details, there's equipment, there, I mean, there's real estate issues, there's a lot of things that need to be covered. And in the, with no offense when I say this, in the lightning pace with which local government operates sometimes, and we actually can do things very well, I think, but sometimes these things that are highly complex need that little extra time to make sure they work out right, and that's what our goal is, is to make sure it works right in the end.
Right, I would agree with Councilmember Eaton, it's, you know, let us shoot to finish early, and if we do, that would be great, but I think we'd be wise to give ourselves more time rather than less.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Other council reports, I know I have a couple of things to report. Dawn, do you want to start?
Yes, I've had some recent conversations with Mr. Alan Fisher, who is the person in charge of the undergrounding of utilities on Industrial Road, and he has, on a regular basis, kept me up to, up to speed on what their schedule is. I think the, the general thing, and probably the safe thing to say right now, is that they expect this entire project to be completed this fall. They do not expect that it will interfere with any of the, the Christmas season for any of the retail merchants in that area, and they are proceeding along those lines and they expect to be complete. So that project should be wound up this fall.
The project that will not end, nothing? Matt?
Yes, I had two things. We had received, I think all of us received, a letter from the California Apartment Association. And just real quickly, so that the public knows what this is about, it's a, they're asking us to sponsor a bill, Assembly Bill 438 by PARA, that would permit rental housing providers to use the sex offender database to protect residents from high-risk sex offenders. And then they have four bullet points, which I'm not going to read right now, but I simply wanted to ask that we would consider this resolution on a future council agenda.
Through the chair, Councilmember Eaton provided that to me earlier today, and I've referred it to the police chief for a report, so we are studying.
Very good. And the second thing is, if you remember at our last council meeting when we discussed on the agenda, the, reading it here from the minutes, the payment for outreach coordinator on Scoot, I had asked at that time that before the September 16th date is eclipsed again on the Maktari contract, that we look at that contract again, have it brought back to council for review, do an RFP, and/or, well, not and/or, but the other option, I suppose, is look at hiring a city engineer, but I think we need to look at that, we haven't looked at it since September 16th of 2002.
Okay. All right, I have a couple of items. The first is, I wanted to announce, I know it's sort of old news at this point, but we have actually hired a new city manager, Mark Weiss. He's going to be starting September 26th. It was a very interesting process, having not gone through it, I think the city in 18 years that Mike Iver has been on board, certainly a lot has changed, and there were a lot of very qualified candidates out there. It was a tough decision, but I think that overall, the council, and we had members of staff, department heads involved in the process as well, went through and really scrutinized and screened these, these candidates, and have selected the, I think, individual who's going to do a great job for San Carlos. He has over 22 years of experience, is currently down south in La Quinta, but is from this area somewhat as well. He was over in Half Moon Bay, is their city manager during some very difficult times as well. So I think, looking forward to having Mark join the, the City of San Carlos team, and again, that's September 26th. If you think about it, if you see him around town, please stop and say hello and welcome him to San Carlos. The next item I had is, was actually quite happy, Matt Grokot and I were at the groundbreaking ceremony for Hillcrest Park. As many of you know, Hillcrest Park is a very small park up in the northern end of San Carlos that has been sort of unappreciated and undersupervised over the last umpteen years. I was amazed at the number of residents who came up and said, oh my gosh, it's been asphalt and really pretty ugly trees for a long, long time. So the groundbreaking did occur, we're in process, should have a beautiful new park up there within three months or so. It's, it's a very small park, so if you blink, you might miss it, but it is there and it's going to be beautiful. The interesting thing to note in this case is that it was actually the residents and the neighbors that came to Barry and said, can we do something to our park? And Barry was able to pull together with the neighborhood and the residents' help, a great project. They designed a lot of it themselves, the city matched, they made contributions, they actually gave money, dollar contributions that the city then matched. So overall, it's, it was really a wonderful community-based park, and, and looking forward to actually the, the opening celebration on that one. Two other quick things. One, actually to my fellow council members, I don't know if you real, if you received the same thing that I got, but sort of in parallel with our sustaining San Carlos, or I don't know, whatever initiative we're calling the visioning process now here in San Carlos, the county actually is also doing a visioning process, it's called Shared Vision 2010. And I found it very opportune that they're embarking on essentially the same thing that we're doing here in San Carlos. And I think it, it points out two things. First of all, that clearly it's a need that local elected officials are recognizing that the trends are not positive, especially when it comes to things like affordable housing, affordability, traffic, transportation, and job work balance. So I'm, I'm going to pass this along to staff, to Jeff, and then I think, second, we should just make sure that some of the things that we're doing don't duplicate the efforts of the county, but that we approach it in more of a collaborative model and look to try to share some of their learnings and let them piggyback on what we're doing and vice versa.
Madam Mayor, when we had the subcommittee, Jeff's aware of this, and in fact, this process preceded ours, actually. So we've, we've used.
Okay, well, we had, we had the idea back.
We've used all the, the good services that Mr. Malpe has.
Okay.
Special connections there.
Quick, give it back to me. Wonderful. And then finally, just for the edification of everyone, we have, I think, a record-breaking six candidates for our city council election come November, so it will be very interesting to see what happens. As you know, the city is not in a position to endorse or support any of those candidates, but I'm sure you'll see them out in town, and I'm sure you'll see signs up. And we do have a candidate orientation night here at the city, as well as the local Chamber of Commerce, and it seems to me, the League of Women Voters also puts on a candidate night. So please stay tuned to hear from each of the candidates and ask them questions, because I think this will be an, an interesting time to see, to get some, especially with two of our very valued incumbents stepping down after many, many years, over a decade, I know for each one of them. So please be informed and take the time to learn out, learn who they are.
Through the chair, I just wanted to add that, to amplify what Mayor Teguldordi said, we also have information on the city's website about the candidates, all the candidate statements are up as of today, and we will be having pictures of the candidates on the website. And as you indicated, there will be a candidate forum in this very room, the Chamber of Commerce, that will be videotaped, be both live on the TV channel and available on demand. And then also, we will tape the League of Women Voters seminar. So as we've done every year since 1994, when the website went up, we'll make the information available in many, many fashions, so residents can learn about these six people.
Okay, thank you very much for that update. Moving along, under agenda item four, this is actually a presentation of two proclamations to two individuals, actually, on our police force here, who, it's actually nice to be able to give them the proclamations, because in this case, many of you, I'm sure, are aware that there was a, a two-year-old boy who was struck by a car on Laurel, down in the south end of Laurel. And unfortunately, most often, those end up very tragically. Well, in this case, police urgent, I mean, police service technician Jesse Smith and a community service officer, Terry Bravo, were actually on site and on the scene within 52 seconds after the call came in. They were able to perform CPR and actually revived the two-year-old and were able to get him transported to the hospital safely, where he could get the medical attention that he needed. So at this time, I just, I would like to really commend the two officers for being there so promptly, quickly assessing the situation, and taking, taking charge and doing what you needed to do to save a little boy's life. So if you'll come up to the podium, that'd be great. Are you here?
You know, I just want to say thank you and everything, but we couldn't have done this without our entire team. And we had a lot of other officers there, and we were just first on the scene, but it was really, it was a large team effort, and the support from the sergeants, and just everybody around the community has been really great, and I just want to thank you very much.
To add to that, we just also like to thank the additional team members from South County Fire, Belmont P.D., and AMR, who are with us, and our prayers and our thoughts are with Bradley Quinn and his family. Well, thank you very much. Like I said, it's, it's nice to be able to say positive things and good things like that. Next on our agenda is actually a, one of our senior citizens advisory board members, unfortunately, real life kind of got involved in his volunteer life, and so after two years of contributing to the board, he's forced to step down at this time just due to work, work obligations. So Patrick Williams, Patrick, are you here? Oh, there you are, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Come on up and let me give you your, your plaque in thanking you.
Thank you very much. This is, we give all of our retiring or resigning board members plaques, just so that they can remember that they actually did contribute. We certainly appreciate the time and the, and the import and the value that you brought. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, five minutes, I'm sorry, 10 minutes of public comment at this time. Actually, this is a public comment period of time limited to 10 minutes for persons who wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, on the posted agenda. I have one speaker slip actually from a Richard Gash?
Gash.
Gash, I'm sorry. Please come up to the podium and state your city of residence for the record.
640 Chestnut Street, it's right across the street. And I'm here trying to get a parking permit on that side of the street. There's nothing in Chestnut Street. You have people there, parking there for two or three weeks at a time. We've had to report. They keep moving the trucks, every so often, they're commercial trucks, they put a, the police come by finally after I've really bothered them and put an orange sticker on, the guy pulls it off, moves it to. pulls it off, moves it two spaces down and becomes legal again. This has been going on for two years, not two months, and there is no parking permit there, on the other side of the library. And I think if you put a three-hour parking time limit on it, he'd get tired of leaving his trucks there. He'd have to move them every three hours and then he wouldn't do it. There's also a man sleeping in one of them, because it's semi-abandoned. And my wife won't walk the dog anymore in the evenings. I got a bad leg, I just had an operation, and I have to take a bike around there. There's a lot of old women that walked dogs at that time. They won't go through the park or anything, because the man's sleeping there. And I told a policeman one day, this week, and he stopped, and he pulled over to the fellow who was in the truck at the time, "It's not his truck." And he asked him if he was all right, and with that, he drove away. I couldn't understand it. I thought that was illegal to live in a truck like that, especially when the truck's not moved. But if you take some of those trucks away, the older people from the senior citizens would have some parking spots. There's one parking permit there between San Carlos Avenue and Cherry Street, and it happens to be a two-hour parking right almost in front of the senior citizens. And so if they park there, they have to move. But nobody else has to. And it doesn't make sense to me, you know? They drive, there's not even a speed limit there. And from Cherry Street to San Carlos, it's like a Speedway. Some of those people drive down there. I lost one cat, my other friend did too. I mean, I don't understand it. On Elm Street, it's great. There's no problem. You've got two-hour parking and everything like that, and those big apartments, houses don't seem to have any trouble. And we're like in no man's land. On the other side, there is no parking at all. You know, anybody can park there for 10 days, I guess, because they come and put the thing on. He pulls it off and moves it over two spaces. He flaunts the law. I don't know. Is it legal for someone to sleep in the car?
Well, I see our police chief sitting in the back there taking notes, so I'm sure, perhaps you could give your information to our chief of police and allow-
Well, I've been to the police station so many times, not with this police chief, but I've talked to the city clerk who was, I guess she's on vacation now, right? She sent a, two weeks ago, I guess it was, or a week and a half ago, she sent an email to them. I got, some officer called me and said, "We're looking into it." The truck's still there. It's going now. He moved it two spaces, so it's now going on its fourth day. I mean, that's not right. If, for nothing else, I don't care about the guy even sleeping, that the old people, I talked to the woman at the, you know, I've been here 20 years, and I've seen the old people come by, she said, and they'll circle the block twice and then go home. They live here. They deserve a parking place, you know? You build a beautiful library, you've got people coming from all over the county to use it. That's great. But why should it intimidate people that have lived here all their life?
Yeah, no, I agree. Would you, would you mind working with Brian Moore?
I was just going to say, Madam Mayor, that I did hear about Mr. Gash's issue, and I did refer it to the chief a couple of days ago, so I know they're looking into it. And it sounds like perhaps, from what I understand in reviewing this, that what the gentleman says is correct, that the individual question keeps moving his vehicle. And so maybe we need to look at something like, you know, no overnight parking or three-hour-
Yeah, well, I would, let's refer to the Traffic and Transportation Commission-
But again, like I said, I-
But in the meantime, try to, try to take care of this individual.
Seven, and six in the evening, seven in the morning, six in the evening. This man's going to have to move that truck every three hours at whatever time limit you put on it. He'll get tired of that and take it to where he lives or where it works.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that-
At night, because at night, all the people, local people that live across the street, they have to use it. You know what I mean? They don't have, they have two family cars-
Brian, if we could, let's, let's refer this to the right channels. Allow the traffic, the proper process is that the Traffic and Transportation Commission will look at and make a recommendation for changing the timed parking on that street, and then that requires an ordinance change. So we'll move this through the process to, I think you bring up a larger issue.
No time limit at all.
Yeah, no, I understood that. So if we can, in fact, perhaps as part of this, look at all of the streets surrounding City Hall and what I call the civic center, I think we can identify probably, there may be other issues that have been sort of the unintended consequences of a new library, a larger library, and some additional building. So we'll take that through. And in the meantime, I know that, I'm sure, the police will be monitoring that vehicle on your street. Thank you for taking the time to come this evening.
Madam Mayor, if I can just comment, please. So this gentleman knows the city clerk did do her job. We all got copies of these emails that he sent through.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on public comment? Okay. Next item, consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered to be routine in nature, and they will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Any of my fellow council members want any items removed?
Item D, please.
Okay, D's and David has been requested to be removed. Nope. Okay, staff?
No, Madam Mayor.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to have any item removed for separate discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve consent calendar items, the exception of six?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of consent calendar items, numbers A, B, C, E, F, G, H, and I, which is adoption of ordinance number 1362, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code with regard to four-hour parking in the 1700 block of Laurel Street, J, K, and L.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Lynn, I got the right name this time?
Again, Councilmember Davis is absent. Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Teague Doherty?
Yes. Okay, Matt, 6D, which is actually the approval of our minutes from July 25th.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would ask that we be able to postpone the approval of these. I've got an item on here that I'm discussing with the city attorney that's sensitive, and I want to make sure I have it finalized and understood correctly before we approve these minutes. If we could just hold off for the next meeting and approve-
So we could just move to, move these to a date-specific next-
To a date, yeah, our next council meeting, which we need in September. So I would move that.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, moved and seconded. Lynn?
Councilmember Davis is absent. Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Mayor Teague Doherty?
Yes. All right, the next item on our agenda this evening is actually a public hearing. It's a public hearing for the consideration of an appeal. This is an item that went before our planning commission, and it's an appeal to the application of Steve Elmore from Stern Toller Bakery for a conditional use permit located at 915A Terminal Street. Liz?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and members of the community. This proposal that we are presenting to you this evening is for the Stern Toller Bakery. As the mayor has mentioned, it's a wholesale and distribution bakery, which would occupy a 6,000-square-foot tenant space.
I'm sorry, Liz, would you mind just turning down the lights so that people who can see this better?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Or Brian could, I guess. That's a bit better. Thank you.
There would be six employees and six parking spaces would be required under code. By way of background, the applicant did apply for a pre-application in April of 2005 to determine whether the city would support the application or not. The item was scheduled for review by the zoning administrator originally on June 20th of this year. The zoning administrator did, however, refer the item to the planning commission because of some neighborhood concerns. The planning commission then reviewed the item on July 5th of 2005 and approved the item unanimously. And subsequently, we've received an appeal on July 15th from a Mr. Tim Gordon. Just a brief site description, the property is located at the eastern end of Terminal Way and Tanklage Road, and is approximately 15,000 square feet in size. The 14,000-square-foot multi-tenant building is located in the, towards the center of the property and is surrounded by planned manufacturing zoning districts on three sides, and then a residential zoning district on the north side. There are 10 open parking spaces on the property. Parking and pedestrian access is from Terminal, which would be the front door, and deliveries would be from the rear door abutting Tanklage Road. Parking availability for two cars would be available within the interior of the building. In order for the city council to approve a conditional use permit on appeal, they would need to make two findings. First, that the proposal would not be detrimental to the community, and secondly, that the proposal would be consistent with the city's general plan, and in this case, the east side's specific plan. In terms of the first finding, staff believes that the proposal would not be detrimental to the neighborhood for two reasons. There wouldn't be specific noise or odor impacts, in our opinion. In terms of noise, we did conduct a series of inspections with noise meters from a variety of locations, including on both sides of the property and from the residential neighborhood, and there were either no registering noise readings or very minor acceptable-type noise readings. The applicant additionally conducted a trial run of deliveries at 4:30 in the morning, and the city did not receive complaints regarding that trial run. And finally, the delivery area, as I mentioned, is at the rear of the property, furthest from the residential area, approximately 320 feet from the closest residence. In terms of odors, the proposal does involve baking of goods, which I mentioned, and would not involve coffee roasting or other unique or harsh odors. Coffee roasting in particular is known for having offensive or strong odors. The business, as I mentioned, would be conducted also within an entirely enclosed building. In terms of the second conditional use permit finding, staff also believes that the proposal is consistent with the city's general plan and east side's specific plan. First, it diversifies uses within the east side industrial area, and it also contributes to the healthy growth and expansion of San Carlos businesses. It is additionally compatible with the surrounding businesses. In terms of public commentary, as I mentioned, we did receive an appeal, which is also supported by a letter of opposition from the Gordon family at 909 Hall Street, and that is in your packet for your consideration. We also received questions regarding noise and odors from the Loryella Association president, but haven't heard specific concerns or opposition regarding those inquiries. We specifically conducted the trial run in response to those concerns. Finally, we received an inquiry and then a comment of support from Roger Selby, who's a property owner at 920 through 930 Terminal Way. With that, and one minor recommended change to the draft conditional use permit, which would be the elimination of draft condition number 14, dealing with land use indemnification. That condition really isn't necessary, because it's codified, so that could be eliminated. We are recommending approval, or that the city council uphold the approval of the planning commission and approve the conditional use permit based on the findings that I've mentioned and that are listed in your staff report. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here to make a presentation and answer any questions as well. Are there questions for Ms. Cullinan? Don?
Liz, on page three of the staff report, down at the bottom under parking, you say that the site would provide, well, it talks about there's 10 spaces on-site, and the proposed use would require six parking spaces. The site would provide four open spaces, which are in the front, I understand. And then the tenant space would provide an additional two parking spaces. What does that mean, the tenant space?
This particular tenant. So there are three tenant spaces within the building. The other two are vacant right now. So this particular tenant space has availability for two parking spaces within the interior of the building, ideally the loading vans and employee parking areas. And then the four open spaces are dedicated to this particular tenant as well.
In other words, Don, they're going to roll up the doors and pull the vans in?
That's correct.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to have that for the record. Okay. Second question is on page four of the staff report, where you note that you took some sound, decibel-type readings. What time of the day were those readings taken?
Approximately 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay. Next question is, well, the applicant has indicated that they would have no kitchen waste type of thing, and the only thing that they would really have is for waste would be, you know, plastic container type of things, or things that broken, are broken that way. It seems to me that should they have any kitchen-type waste, or waste that we would normally consider from a restaurant because of a food-type product, that we should consider some type of, you know, recycling of that nature. And I don't, I mean, they say that they're just going to use everything up, but you've got to be something left over. So that, I don't want to make a big deal out of it, but I think the principle is there.
And that's certainly a condition we could either refine draft condition number 11, or you could provide some type of encouragement for recycling, composting, that kind of a thing.
Okay. And where's my other questions here? Mr. Gordon made a comment in one of his emails to you, or to the, the planning staff, that talks about, well, to quote him, he says, "There is no actual enforcement of conditional use permits in this city once a permit is granted." Would you care to comment on that?
I haven't experienced any kind of inability to enforce conditional use permit conditions. The city normally operates on a complaint-only basis, or in cases where there's an environmental document, we have a positive or affirmative obligation to go out and monitor enforcement of conditions. But if there's, there are, there's a specific code section that would declare this a misdemeanor if there were a violation of the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Just the conditional use permit, six, I'm looking at attachment one, Liz, the conditional use permit, calls for six on-site, and that, even though there are 10 available, huh?
That's correct. Six associated with this particular tenant space, when the other spaces become occupied, they would-
This conditional use permit is the one that the planning commission approved.
That's correct.
Okay. And then you're suggesting, and they approved it with 14, and you want to, you're suggesting we eliminate 14?
That's correct. And we did receive commentary from the property owner expressing concern regarding number 14 as well, so.
15 is a one-year, is there some reason, you don't expect the applicant to use the permit within a one-year period?
No, we do in this case. This is actually part of the code currently. And what it's intended to do is to allow the city to revisit conditions, since they may change, existing surrounding conditions may change after a year.
Part of the same question that Councilman Eaton talked about is that, I don't know, I defer to Mr. Landzone, that there are several conditional use permit litigation that we get involved with in terms of, they just don't get a lot of public visibility. But a conditional use permit is just that. It is the, this is the document to enforce how a property is used and under what conditions.
Specifically, yes.
And then finally, I guess, Don, you're suggesting that you put some type of waste issue in conditional permit number 11? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, something that would include a kitchen-type waste or a food-type waste, if any, that it could be recycled. It's something that we need to keep working on as an overall city plan to improve the whole nature of our waste collection management.
Okay. Matt, did you have questions?
Yes, I did. The questions I have relate to what you had said at the very beginning about noise and odor. So my first question is, does this project, when they build this TI, if you will, will it include any kind of overhead exhaust fans that are on the roof of the building, exhausting the baking process? And are, do we know anything about the noise of such machinery, if it's to exist?
I think the details of the tenant improvements would best be for the applicants. I'd like them to address those.
Okay.
Do you want to, why don't you, we'll have him come back. Do you have other questions?
The other question has to do with odor, and have we, I didn't see anything in here in the write-up. I saw things about parking and noise and so forth. And you mentioned odor in your presentation, but I didn't see anything in the write-up about it. So I have a, just a, I don't know how to pose it as a question, but I have some concerns there about odors. The only thing I could think of in terms of a question is, did we look at, did staff look at other bakeries, or do we have any bakeries in San Carlos currently, or maybe in neighboring cities that were visited that are of the same scope or size as what's being proposed here?
We certainly have had experience with bakeries and also with coffee roasteries, both within San Carlos and outside of San Carlos. And generally speaking, unless there's a reason to drill down further, for example, in environmental analyses, we wouldn't get into the odor issue. That's why you're not seeing it in the staff report. It's sort of a prima facie case of not having an offensive odor or a harmful odor. It's really the odor of baked goods, so that's not something that the staff was concerned about and therefore analyzed further.
So what you're, what I'm taking from your answer is, staff- So what you're, what I'm taking from your answer is, staff doesn't feel like there's going to be a predominance of baking smells in the, in the neighborhood near this, this site. I'm thinking of like, you know, when I drive through Oakland, when you drive up 880, there's a bunch of bread factories and cookie factories, Mrs. Smith's Cookies and so forth, and you can smell it when you go up there, especially on a day where there's not a prevailing wind going through. And that is, by the way, that's something I noticed on the map, is if you look at the direction here, I think most of the times, the winds will carry the odors and any that might exist away from the neighborhood, but...
So our feeling is that there would be no negative odors associated with the proposal, and that's certainly subjective, but it's, it's not usually been an issue for neighborhoods when there's something that's not overwhelming or negative.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that it, Matt?
Yeah, I'll come back to the applicant with that.
Liz, I just had actually one question, and it has to do with parking on-site. The overall building, you said, was 14,000 square feet, 10 spaces on-site, plus the two inside this roll-up door thing, so 12 effectively. If the applicant uses four of the spaces in front, that leaves six spaces in front, correct? And those six, are those six spaces in front adequate for covering the remaining 8,000 square feet based on projected uses?
Yes, for light industrial uses, they are.
Now, the building, when I looked at the floor plan, it looks like they're only using the ground floor and only on the one side of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so the remaining 8,000 square feet is on the other side of the lobby, and then all of the upstairs?
I believe it's sort of mezzanine-level area. Is that right, Rick?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I just, I can't see, I can only look at the elevation, and I assumed that it looked like there was a bigger footprint or a larger square footage than sort of intuitively or what staff report is saying. So the building overall is only 14,000 square feet?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm nodding at the property owner, that's...
So the offices are in the front only, and then the back is warehouse, or...
6,000 on the...
Would you mind just coming up to the microphone?
Rick DiBenedetti, Track Properties, owner of 915 Terminal Way. There's 6,000 feet on the east side footprint, 6,000 on the west side, and then 2,000 upstairs.
Oh, so the upstairs does not, in fact, reflect the same building footprint as the downstairs?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's actually a footprint of 12.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies things quite a bit.
There's actually 11 parking places. This got brought out at the planning commission, and it's been very clear that back when a building permit was pulled back in the 80s, the city of San Carlos required us to put in a handicap parking stall, and so that refigured the parking in the front to 11 spots.
Okay, well, I just based it on the site plan and counted, and I counted 10, so that's all right. Thank you very much. You answered my question really...
Madam Mayor, before Rick leaves, Rick, hello? Yeah. At that, at that plan, that's my, that was my question, since the conditional use permit only asks for six, even though there were 11 available, planning commission did not make it a condition of the use of this building to raise the level at least to, at least to 10, and leave the, so there was no discussion about that, huh? Said another way, six is enough in the conditional use permit?
Yes.
You're saying there are 11 there, 10 is...
There's actually 11 for the total building.
Correct. And so that would come at some use downstream.
Whoever occupies the balance of the building.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
You know what, Liz, I actually do have one other question, and maybe it's a conditional use permit question. Do we need to put something into the conditional use permit, or how do, if there is an application that comes back for the remainder of the building, but that does not require a conditional use permit, how do we know that there's going to be enough parking and that he, the property owner won't sort of be double-dipping, if you will, and saying, well, there's 11 spots for the building? Do we, as the city, keep track of which spots are sort of allocated, or do we need to put that within the conditional use permit?
We basically look at every business registration that comes through the finance department. So the planning department reviews each and every one for, number one, whether the use is appropriate, and number two, whether the parking is appropriate as well. So we will look at every future use that comes in to make sure of that. And also, in our electronic permit tracking system, we'll have all the information associated with this application.
So if something came through for 915B, for example, you could pull it up and see that 915A has four spaces in front, six inside the building somehow, and that there, those spaces are covered, and that there's still an additional seven available for the remainder of the, of the property for additional use?
That's correct. We always look at the site as a whole. We never look at an individual tenant space, so...
Madam Mayor, if you look at two, condition two, that, that's the out, is there's a reservation of the right to go back and revisit. So the conditional use permit is just as conditional?
That's correct.
Okay, wonderful. If there are more questions for staff, this is a public hearing, and at this time, if the applicant was here and would like to say something, feel free, come up to the microphone, followed by, I do have two-speaker requests if additional people are interested in talking on this item. We do have speaker requests lifts by the door. It just helps our city clerk in preparing the minutes. Namon, City of Residence, please.
Natalia Preston, 5348 Elrose Avenue in San Jose, co-owner and managing director of Stern Teller Bakery. And I actually didn't bring a PowerPoint presentation or anything, I just wanted to say a few words regarding what we actually do, you know, what the bakery offers, so you know, and the public knows as well, and also talk to some of the benefits that we bring to the community and the city of San Carlos, or that we feel we bring. First of all, Stern Teller Bakery will offer a whole array of hearty, healthy, and very tasty baked goods. That's including artisan breads, pretzels, soft pretzels, cookies, possibly pastries and cakes. And a German master baker will manage the production according to traditional baking techniques and authentic recipes from Germany, Austria, and Switzerland. These baked goods will be produced fresh every night and delivered in the morning to resellers, local resellers like cafes, grocery stores, supermarkets, hotels, restaurants, et cetera. And at some point, we're hoping to open our own bakery cafe. We believe we are bringing something absolutely positive to the city, and we bring good products, we bring healthy products, and also unique products, in the sense that, you know, they're not offered a lot in the United States, actually, and not in the Bay Area. And we actually conducted taste tests in March that showed that people were really, really excited about the products. And so we feel we would bring a very positive brand to San Carlos, and we would be very happy to associate the brand with the city of San Carlos. And actually, as an example of the positive feedback we've been getting from people, we were able to collect 75, actually 80, signatures from residents and businesses, mainly San Carlos, Redwood City. And you're welcome to have a look at these, and they're here, people that are supporters and want to see us succeed here in San Carlos. Also, we will help bring highly specialized craftsman skill to the area, because Stern Teller Bakery, baking techniques are innovative, and the training scheme we offer to future employees is thorough and is based on the craftsman skill, the experience, and the seven-year training that our German master baker brings from Germany. Thirdly, we have used local service partners and contractors up to this point, and we will continue to do so in the future. We will also use local retailers, as we said, cafes, grocery stores, as a channel of distribution. And also, the San Carlos Harvest Night Farmers Market is on top of our list for reselling. And last but not least, we will be open to opportunities for cooperation and sponsoring events. We want to generously help make community events a great experience for San Carlos residents. Yeah, and I'd just like to conclude by saying that I'm very, very excited to be in San Carlos and start my business here in San Carlos.
Thank you very much. Matt, did you want to ask your questions at this time, related to noise and odor?
Yes, I did. I actually got the odor question, I think, taken care of by staff. Doesn't sound very nice, does it? Baking scents, let's put it that way.
Those are, just tuning in now, right? Missed the odor at the beginning.
Yeah. I do notice when you go to look at houses, though, they, they always have something baking in the oven, so it's not a bad, you know, a bad thing. And the question I had was with the, if there will be any exhaust fans that need to be installed, and since, especially you're doing your operations at night, if there'd be something like that operating?
Yes, we do have to have exhaust fans installed for the ovens that we have, that's required by law.
I take it you have an existing bakery someplace?
No, that's the first bakery.
So I'm just concerned about these, does anybody have any experience with these?
Please, you have to come to the microphone, please.
Matt, I, of course, excuse me, we're just going to try to answer part of this question. I placed phone calls to some competitors, yours bakeries, one of them is Badoin, and the other is Boulanger, who has a large operation in Sunnyvale, and both of them have, the industry itself is fairly regulated in terms of odor and odor control and the timing. You start this bakery at 2:33 in the morning, sometimes even earlier, and the process is done by 36.
Five.
And it's tightly controlled in terms of the odor, and both of these are, I think, substantially larger bakeries and have very...
They are.
And there are no odor issues in Sunnyvale or in San Francisco. Badoin is the French bread baker, and Boulanger is the folks that have an operation here, but they have 12 or 13. So odor is not an issue.
Thank you. Jared Preston, 5348 Elrose Avenue in San Jose as well. I'm also co-owner and co-founder of Stern Teller Bakery. And to the question of exhaust fans, there are actually exhaust fans that are inside the building that draw off the ovens and then get piped on throughout, through the ceiling, so there's actually no noise consideration outside of the building.
So they're not roof-mounted fans?
Exactly.
Okay. And after the presentation, another question that I didn't see specifically addressed in the report that you wrote, which was thorough, but I still had a question. You talked about the delivery vehicles, and I'm just wondering, now, it sounds like they leave by 6:30 in the morning?
So they'll...
So you're probably beating most of the commute traffic, but how many delivery vehicles are we talking about?
So at the moment, we only have one.
One, oh, okay.
Getting started, and it's a Ford E-150, so it's about as noisy as a car.
Well, I'm not concerned about the noise of it, I was just thinking, you know, five or six delivery vehicle, but that's not the case. Okay, thank you.
It's not.
I do have actually a following question. Is there space within the back area that if you needed to accommodate additional vehicles, you could?
There is space in the street, and that's actually allowed there.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Could to leave the signatures that you have with the planning director as a matter of public record in terms of the outreach campaign and, and the public support that today you had received?
Yeah, and if you do, you need copies of that back. I'm sure staff will be able to make copies if you're looking for, that's your mailing list, or, you know, people that you want to, you want to sell to. I understand that. You don't want to, that's my goal, so certainly we'll make sure a copy gets to Liz, or vice versa, a copy gets back to you. Don, did you have a...
One last question on attachment four, and I believe Ms. Preston wrote this, but it says, "Through these doors, finished products are delivered to Stern Teller Bakery's own retail outlet and plus independent grocery stores, et cetera." Do you currently have a retail outlet, or are you anticipating one?
We are just hoping to open one in the next year.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, that's it? Great. Other members? I do have a speaker slip from Tim Gordon, and I apologize if I shouldn't know how to pronounce this, Dagmar, D'Alaschko, D'Alasch? Tim Gordon first, followed by Dagmar, please.
Good evening. My name is Tim Gordon. I live at 909 Hall Street, east of the great San Carlos Railroad Dyke. The issue should be considered a no-brainer right from the beginning. No one in this room honestly would like to see a bakery operating all night long, 250 feet from your bed. The city shouldn't have given these people any indication it would be proper to allow a business of this type to operate near a residential neighborhood. The conditional use permit is for a property in a planned manufacturing district. I live in an R1 district. You are attempting to force conditions that may be appropriate for a planned manufacturing district that will never be appropriate for an R1 district. I have filed numerous noise complaints with the city over the past 10 years. These complaints are due to noises from businesses up to 2,000 feet away, noises that can easily be heard from my house, that come nowhere near your predetermined noise levels the city chooses to accept. My numerous complaints over the years has established an easily defined area that the city is aware of, that noise complaints, that noise emissions are known to cause residents to lose their ability to enjoy their property. These complaints were made to the city planning department, the San Carlos Police Department, the East Side Advisory Committee, the city council, and when appropriate, other offices within the city. No one can say they weren't aware of any problems due to the cities, to the businesses in this area. This knowledge of noise problems alone should have been enough for the planning committee to realize that there would be a large resistance from any concerned, aware resident to allow a business to operate during the middle of the night, less than 200 feet from an R1 district. The period of time from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM, a resident expects to be allowed to enjoy the property free from preventable noises and/or odors. You are attempting to impose a level of noise and odors not conducive to sleeping or otherwise enjoying our property during a time when we expect the city to protect us from such odors and noises. You have no right to force us to breathe the emissions from any business, pleasant, obnoxious, toxic, or otherwise, while we attempt to enjoy our property during or after normal business hours. Operating a business that emits odors and noise for long periods of times during the middle of the night will constitute a public nuisance. Our free and legal use of our property would be restricted. We would not be able to enjoy our property in a manner consistent with the residential neighborhood. There is nothing attached to my property title warning us that the city may at any time force us to submit to breathing the emissions from any business. There are obviously byproducts from the cooking process that will not be entirely pleasant or healthy to breathe, mixed in with the odor of freshly baked goods. We are already subjected to numerous loud noises throughout the night that the city does nothing about. There's the middle-of-the-night auto towing drop-off, forcing us to listen to steel and chains clanging together until they're able to get the vehicle unloaded inches from our property. There's the parking lot sweepers that apparently have to operate in the middle of the night. You've got numerous cabinet makers, woodworking, automobile repair, and refinishing shops that emit loud, high-pitched noises when releasing the air pressure from their air tanks, as well as operating production and dust collecting equipment at night with the doors all rolled up. Then you have the wonderful noise of the barking dogs, not one or two neighborhood animals that quiet down after a large, after a short while, but a large group of unattended animals barking throughout the night. The owner of this business, the Peninsula Pet Resort, accepts money for their care. They aren't cared for during the night. They bark on nights, most often weekends or holidays. Christmas and New Year's Eve is my favorite. The city has refused to deal with this issue for over nine years. This is my conditional use permit, that you don't enforce them. Nine years I've been calling the police department. Not a, not a thing has been done. I have letters from the San Carlos Police Department acknowledging the problem, and they are, they are aware the problem still exists. The San Carlos Police Department chooses, chose to intimidate me by stalking me for half an hour one morning until I called Spagnoli and reported the incident. The city still refuses to resolve the problem. We also have to listen to the BFI or Allied Waste Trucks picking up dumpsters long before the 6 o'clock hour. Calling the police has proven to be completely, proven to be a completely ineffective method of getting, either reporting a complaint or getting a result from the complaint. The city claims there is no change in occupancy for this building, but there wasn't a bakery operating all night long there previously. I feel this is an extreme change of occupancy. The noises and emissions from the proposed business are unique and unlike any you would expect to be subjected to at night. We are regularly forced to breathe the emission... We are regularly forced to breathe the emissions from the car repair and painting shops during normal business hours. The fact they are not allowed to operate on weekends and nights allow us to enjoy our property free of paint, Bondo breakdust, and exhaust emissions. During the year, there are dozens of nights where the air is close to perfectly still. During these nights, the odors would build up to a point where it would be uncomfortable to breathe even if you weren't attempting to sleep. The fact that odors are not specifically addressed in the planned manufacturing does not allow the city to force them on us at their free will. The city claimed that a noise test conducted at 2:00 PM, maybe 3:00 PM, is the same as if it were conducted in the middle of the night. That's ridiculous. The fact that the city feels a test of rolling up a single door truly reflects the noise level of a fully functioning bakery is again ridiculous. The fact that the planning commission suggested that it would be proper to keep the maggot and fly-infested trash dumpster inside the building because they don't have enough room outside, might as well keep it inside. Where are you going to be baking your goods? Inside the same building? This shows how little the city has thought, thought this through, and perhaps some insight into what the bakery owners think is a clean and healthy environment to produce food products. The city's notification of residents within 300 feet of this proposed business location is another indication the city codes are not up to par with life next to a planned manufacturing district. This bakery will affect the entire southern portion of East San Carlos during some of the calmer nights. There will be at times very concentrated, large-scale odor that will be offensive to most anyone that is exposed to it. Location is the main determining factor of who will be affected by this business. This type of business needs to be located far enough away from a residential area that will not affect it at all. There should be a notification process that would encompass everyone within a 2,500-foot radius of any business that could possibly impact the neighborhood. The systems that would be needed for operation of a fully functional bakery are not even disclosed. Another indication, the city has no clue as to the true and actual effect of this business on the nearby residents. I personally cannot afford to allow the business to operate and deal with the problems after the fact. The city has proven ineffective in resolving complaints of any type from me. The city has proven to be ineffective in enforcing conditional use permits after they are granted. Wholesale violations can be seen from the street for many businesses in the area. The city claims to patrol the area and weed out those that are in violation, but they are completely ineffective in doing so. The city codes do not reflect realistic noise levels and are not consistent with what would be appropriate for a business next to a residential area. The planned manufacturing codes read that any business may emit any noise at any level they want to for up to 30 minutes, any time of the day, any time of the day of the week, without violating any ordinances. It seems like they could stop for a few minutes and start it up again without any prosecution. You could alternate on and off right on through the night. This is not consistent with a residential area. If on my residential property I caused a very loud, continuous noise, the police would be there to stop it within a few short minutes, and would be ready to shoot me if I didn't stop it well before the 30-minute passed. If I wanted to bake goods in my home throughout the night, making noise and odor six days a week, I would once again be stopped by the police. I demand that you prevent any business from imposing on our right to enjoy our property. Any and all complaints that have been brought up here tonight or any time over the last 10 years will be brought up in any suit that I need to follow up with. Considering the city of San Carlos has no clue of the actual effect of this business on our area, I'm reserving the right to include any complaint, whether it has been brought to your attention previously or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dagmar, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. I'm not even going to try because I know I'd totally butcher it.
Dagmar Dolachko, the owner and founder of Peritus Precision Translations, also representing the German-American Business Association of the Bay Area and beyond. This case has come to my attention, and by that, to the attention of a lot of business people, not only in San Carlos, but throughout the Bay Area, and by now also internationally. And I have to say, in my 17 years of having lived in the United States, and of the United States having always been the country of business, where you, as a small business owner, can make it, I have never seen a case like this, where a city was prohibiting through the process, and through, actually, not the city, I'm not accusing the city, but where a single individual would stop a good and solid business from operating in this manner. So our community of German-American, and by that, Swiss and Austrian-American businesses, we are surprised by what is happening here in the city of San Carlos, and I have to say that the city has gotten a little bit of bad press for this already. I hope this will not continue, and that it will be reversed by an approval of this case, and that the bakery can finally get started. I personally moved to San Carlos recently. It is the city of good living. I love living here. And I would expect a city like San Carlos to support, which you are, I see that you are supporting the efforts, a small business that is trying to get established and provide a healthy, diverse food resource to the citizens. It is also supporting a business environment like my own. And I have seen support from the city and the Chamber of Commerce, who unfortunately the representative had to leave. She was going to make a comment to this as well, because the chamber supports the efforts of emerging businesses as well. And I would hope that the city will continue to support businesses like ours. I have, I understand the concerns of the gentleman to some degree, but I also see that he has moved into an area that from the beginning, since he has moved there, he knew, was bordered by an industrial-zoned area. And I am actually surprised by the amount of anger that he is expressing against the industrial environment, which also supports our city. Where would we be without all of the industries? And a bakery is probably one of the most pleasant neighbors you could get. Just imagine if we got maybe another, one of the cabinet manufacturers who are sitting right next to our office, when they have their varnishing days, I tell you, maybe I should file something against them, but they are also in business. So we endure that because we're all in the same zoning, and we are all in business. So it never occurred to me to fight anything like that because there is a zoning restriction in the city, and we are in that area. Maybe you have filed a complaint against the cabinet maker, because that one actually is in the wind direction that would hit your house, whereas the bakery is in the other direction. So I'm really hoping that the city will have some good sense and decide on a business case, stick to their zoning requirements and their zoning that has been set in the past, and let Stern Taller Bakery proceed and finally operate. There are hundreds and actually thousands of people out there who are waiting for some good bread. I mean, this may not be obvious to an American. You have different aspects of bread, but for the people who come from Europe, we have different expectations, and we were so excited to hear that they are coming to San Carlos of all places. Maybe they'll have to go away, but I don't think that would be good for San Carlos either. Then they'll just make a good name for another city. So I hope the city will approve the bakery and that they can start operations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to address the council? Harrington, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Discussion?
Well, Madam Mayor, kicking off is saying, we're not here to, it's already been approved.
Yes.
We're here for filing an appeal, and I'm not sure how the international community is viewing this, but this is approved. All we're reviewing is an appeal process. And we're here to look at not any political or international implications, that this is a valid use of the property, and that it is in line with the general welfare of our general plan, and that this proposed use will not conduct in a manner that is proposed, be injurious to the, to the group. And our job in this particular process is to say, the planning commission's approved this. Do we see any overwhelming other information that would choose us to overrule that? And frankly, I see absolutely none, and would move to deny the appeal.
Uphold? So you would move to uphold the decision of the planning commission and deny the appeal?
Correct, uphold, move to approve the, sorry, support the condition of the approval of the planning commission and deny the appeal.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, I would second that, but with the feelings that I think it's important that we realize that what we do on the city council here is a, is a function of balance. And we appreciate businesses, and we, for the most part, wholeheartedly support the Chamber of Commerce and all the good things that they do for the city, and all the things that they relate to. But we also support residences. And it's important to note that, you know, when we call ourselves the city of good living, we do it for a reason, because we always try to support the lifestyle that we, that we come into, into play with each day. It's therefore important that we have a balance in that whole approach. And you can't go too far one way or another. We have to make for coexisting conditions when, when we have properties that abut each other that are different uses. I've said before that if I had to plan San Carlos from the start, I would have put residential on one side of El Camino and industrial on the other side. I, however, have inherited, as a city councilman, 50 or 60 years' worth of houses that are on the east side, therefore, I want to make that work as best I can, too. And I recognize the fact that there are abutting residential properties that go right up next to that industrial area. We have to make that work the best we can. I feel that the planning staff has done a good job of trying to anticipate problems, whether it's potential odors and the direction of the wind, and however that may work, and the type of odors that may be in play, whether it's noise, and taking some decibel ratings, and granted, those are at 3:00 in the afternoon, and there's lots of other ambient noise. But on the other hand, I can't imagine a lot of, you know, loud noises anyway, that because most of the business, I mean, for all intents and purposes, is on the inside of the building, and the garage doors, it would be the delivery doors, that would make any noise at all, are going to open and close, I mean, they're clearly on the other side of the building. And the parking issue, I think, has been well documented, too. Those are the only possible things I can think of that, that would come into play here. So with all due respect to the appellate, I think there does need to be a balance here, and therefore, again, I second Mr. King's motion.
Just before we move on, Mike, did your motion include the changes, staff-recommended changes to the conditional use permit?
Yes, it did. I mean, when I make the formal motion, I'll...
Oh, okay. So that wasn't, that wasn't a real motion?
Yeah, it was a real motion, but if you want me to, I will also include the elimination of a conditional use permit number 14, and, and the addition of, how did you want to word it, on a conditional use permit, number 11, the, the best efforts basis to include some type of recycling of food product materials.
Food waste product. Okay. And so, Don, oh, I'm seeing the city attorney.
If Councilmember King would simply add to his motion, since this is, although it's an appeal, it's a hearing de novo, the findings as contained in the staff report...
I was going to do that. I want to let everybody else get their two cents' worth in before we...
Okay, well, why don't you go ahead and finish the whole motion, and then...
All right, then I will make a motion that the, we, that this body, body approve the conditional use permit and the actions of the planning commission, and deny the appeal in light of the two findings found on page six, that the proposed actions are in accordance with the general plan, and that the proposed use will not be in detriment to the plan of the title at this time.
And making the modifications to the condition.
Two modifications to conditional use permit number 11 and 14, as stated.
And I would again second that.
Okay. And I'm, through the mayor, if I may add one more point, and for the reasons outlined in the staff report and in the presentation this evening.
And, and for the use, and for the, for the comments made in the staff report.
Thank you.
Right. Anybody else? Anybody else want to?
I think we've heard the second. Matt, did you want to add any comments?
I'll just say that the two things that I heard Liz talk about at the very beginning was noise and, and odors, I think how you had it on there. Most of that has been addressed. I do think the noise issue, as far as the roll-up doors and so forth, which is, I take it, when the deliveries would take place, and that's when you're going to start to see some of that activity, I would imagine there's some other activities going on at the same time in other places, so that, you know, the noise level in the, in the neighborhood is probably starting to, you know, churn up at that, at that time. And Mike, between you and the applicant, the question about the fan, I know those can be noisy, but if it's inside the building, yeah, then I don't see that as an issue. And the only thing I wanted to say to all the things that Tim Gordon talked about, I, I've seen his comments before about barking dogs and some other things in the neighborhood, and especially the issue of the barking dogs, I do wish we could find a way to resolve that, because I know it has been a problem for him for many years, and it probably is to other people in the neighborhood. I haven't looked into it enough to know what the source is, but I know that would be a concern for myself, too, so I wish we...
Well, Matt, you might remember, we had an application for a dog in this very block, which we denied.
Yeah.
And the pet resort folks, and contrary to what Mr. Gordon says, those dogs are attended during the day. We have had our dogs at that location, and they are put inside the building at night. Now, you can hear them, there is no question you can, but...
And that seems to be...
All of us, I think, on this council have animals and know that at night, when they're separated from their owners, they're going to, they're going to bark like that, and once, once, one starts barking, the other. I don't know what we can do. I know the chief inspector is saying, you know, we'll...
With all due respect, let's stay focused on the issue at hand.
No, but I just wanted to, you know, he did take a long time to make these comments. I know it's an issue for him, so I just wanted to comment to it quickly.
If it helps, through the mayor, just a quick comment on the trial runs that staff conducted in the afternoon. We actually went into the residential neighborhood with our cell phones and had the applicant slamming the doors shut, and with our noise reader, so we actually simulated the doors rolling up and down, and I think they got a little exhausted by that exercise, but it helped us really understand the impacts in the neighborhood, along with the ambient noise levels, just in case you forgot about that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I don't want to chime in too much here, other than to echo, I think, Don's comments, which is, is that from a general plan perspective, I don't think anybody sitting up here on this dais would ever put incompatible uses like planned manufacturing right next to residential areas. Unfortunately, you know, the alternatives are either we get rid of one incompatible use, or we get rid of the other one, and I don't think, you know, given the lack of housing, that it's an option to rezone all of the residential areas back to light manufacturing, which is probably what they, what they were. This, I think, originally probably started up as worker housing, and due to the high cost of living in the Bay Area, you know, now that people are paying $600,000, $700,000, $800,000 for these homes, they're expecting them to be, you know, quiet resident, what we all think of as, as, you know, houses. But we do need to keep in mind the balance, and we try to be, I think, from a council's perspective and a city's perspective, as sensitive to that as possible, which is why, you know, rather than look at perhaps a auto wrecking yard at this location, you know, there's a lot of really worse types of uses that could go in here. And that, from my perspective, I think, you know, I would love to see a German baker. I miss really good European bread, so, you know, that, that would be a plus. But from the city's perspective, I think that this is a use that will, that will support our local economy. It certainly is unique, and, you know, I like to have sort of a diversity of, and a balance of jobs and of businesses in town, because that way we don't end up going, you know, out of balance one way or the other. So I, I agree with my fellow council members. If it were up to me, you know, we would have fixed this problem a long time ago, or we never would have planned it this way. But unfortunately, there's a longstanding history behind that whole east side of San Carlos, and we just try to do the best we can. So I will stop talking now and ask Lynn to call the question.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
And Mayor Teagle Doherty?
Yes. Okay. Moving towards the end of our meeting this evening, lastly, we have a public comment period. Again, this is a period of time for the residents and the public to address the city council on items not on the posted agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the council at this time? Clint, I'm seeing speaker slip.
Clint Miller, 2429 San Carlos Avenue.
Clint Miller, 2429 San Carlos Avenue. I'd like to revisit the response to the grand jury, the letter that we talked about a little earlier. I came in a little bit late, so I was.
I'm sorry, that was on the posted agenda, so technically you're not allowed under tonight's public comment to talk to us about it, but I would encourage you to either put it in writing or come back at a next council meeting.
Okay, I'll put it in writing.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry to cut you short, but we're limited to what we can do. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public this evening? With that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.